Of the Edington? Forgive me, I wasn't expected to be sitting in this chair tonight, okay? Let me get my thoughts together. Of the town council, we've got a program here, agenda here. We've got a special meeting up front. Presentations of the memorial Brick Garden. Mark Tesser, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could you come forward, sir?
Sure. Cory told me I was going to be first. Boy, I had to be ready. There's no dragging your feet around here. Well, again, good evening to you all. Appreciate your opportunity to speak with you again. I'm Mark Tesser, and with me tonight is Ray Olerk. We represent the local base of the Submarine Veterans Association, National Club. We're the local guys. And bear with me. What the reason you are here tonight is to seek formal town approval of a brick and garden and a flag pole that will complete our silent service memorial down here. Many of you may have seen it, I hope so. If not, invite you to go down. We held off on this. This has been part of the original vision, going back to the inception by the club to create a memorial down on the waterfront. And then, being new at this type of thing, we decided must do the bench, get approval to do that, see how it goes. And as you've hopefully seen, it's come out wonderfully. And so now, what we're approaching is phase two, which will be a brick garden surrounding the monument, the bench, as well as a flag pole with yardarm to fly the appropriate flags adjacent to the bench. And we initially proposed that we would seek a bench similar to Sergeant Parker's black granite bench over here by the children's playground. Well, very fortunately, that was Parker Monuments, and they took on the project and completed it and installed it just two weeks ago. And we're very pleased with it. We've had some very positive comments from our national guys, as well as our district sub-vets, that we've created one of the finest looking memorials to our submarine veterans that they've seen. So we think we did it right, and that was the intent, and we intend to do it. If we were going to do this, that was the object, to not cut any corners, and certainly do it right. And thanks to our fundraising efforts, we were able to, between the club and our local community, and their generosity, raise the entire amount needed to purchase the bench and have it installed. The next phase, we're continuing our fundraising. The Brick Garden, that will be similar to the American Legion Brick Garden up in Memorial Park, as well as similar to Penelope Barker House Welcome Center sidewalk, that is a memorial sidewalk in bricks. And so it will continue to generate funds for the long-term maintenance of the memorial and the area there. So with your approval tonight for the addition of the flagpole and the Brick Garden, that will pretty much complete our initial vision of this project. In your packet, you should have photographs of the bench, as well as the footprint for the Brick Garden. Now, I did some quick math, we're looking at about 200 square feet being consumed by the bricks. And also, working with the town, we're going to take out a portion of the curb leading up to the bench directly into the Brick Garden, to make it handicapped, accessible, and easy for people to come down and enjoy the waterfront right there through our memorial.
Ellen, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? Ask a question? Captain Mark?
Go ahead.
Are you going to use local people to do the brickwork and local people to do the landscaping?
Yes, Todd Watson, many of you may know, is the local mason. He maintains Penelope Barker House, and when people buy bricks, he's the man they go to to install them. These bricks, I think the essence is, is that we will have Todd, who has generously donated his time, we're buying the materials. He's going to put in the entire Brick Garden in the footprint that we designed. And then, as people buy a memorial brick, we'll have two ceremonies a year. One at the dedication, or just prior to the dedication, we will put bricks in. And then, on the Navy birthday in November, and on the submarine birthday, we'll have a small ceremony, and people who have bought bricks can bring them down themselves and place them. And so Todd's involved in that. We're very happy to have his talent. But yes, is that?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
I've got a question. Captain Mark, on the flagpole, what flag will fly on that flagpole?
Predominantly, of course, the American, the American flag. It is a 25-foot tall flagpole, so it won't compete with the town's flagpole at the water down by the break wall.
Okay.
But in addition to the flagpole itself, it will have a yardarm, which is the custom in the Navy, I learned from Ray, that all our flagpoles mimic a sailing ship mast. And off those will be different associations. We'll have our subvets' local emblem flag flying, an MIA flag, and just general pennants along that will probably have the national emblem flag flying. So that's the foundation of that. And on certain holidays or certain special events, we may put up signal flags that, like I do on my boat, that spell out certain celebratory phrases. And so that's the general vision for what we'll be flying.
But you will maintain that?
Yes, we'll maintain the flags and the pole and the grounds initially. However, permanent ownership will be turned over, like all the memorial benches we have, they become the property of the town. We just sign that over, it's a gift from our club back to the town. So in perpetuity, it'll be overseen by the town, but as long as we have a submarine veterans organization here, we will take care of the flags, cleanliness. Of course, the town does a great job of the mowing down there and the hedge trimming and all that. So that's pretty much how we're visioning the long-term care and feeding of our bench and memorial. Is that sufficient?
Any more questions? This is a lovely bench, looks good, it's outstanding bench. Can't wait to see the project finished. So we're looking at, just hang on. We're looking at about next year, in April, that that project will be finished? That's your deadline?
Well, this year.
This year?
And we're looking at, and Ray will address this more in detail, but April 29th is a Saturday, and we intend to invite the public and all the dignitaries, of course, down here to the waterfront and celebrate this, much like many of you that happen to attend our Groundberry King ceremony. It's very similar to that, a lot of flags flying and a lot of music and anthems, but I'll let Ray speak to that in a moment. I pretty much, I think I've covered everything I need to. Any other questions?
We just thank you for what you do for this community, really do.
Believe me, that's a two-way street.
I know.
It's been our pleasure, both with the subvets and with my little tour group. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I didn't bring all of them.
Yeah, just one, thank you.
Ray, would you like to, anything else for me? I'll turn it over to Ray. Well, thank you for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want, one last thing, we are looking for approval to be able to move forward immediately if we can. Thank you.
I just wanted to invite you all to our dedication ceremony. It's going to be on the 29th of April at 2:00, or 1400 for those military types. We're going to have a lot of good-looking men in naval uniforms, we're going to have flags, we're going to have food, and a lot of speeches and music, so y'all come.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're very pleased we have a submarine admiral that's coming to speak.
Is he coming from out of state?
No, he's from here.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jerry Burrows is his name, and he is a submarine admiral, and he lives here in New York.
Thanks, all right, thank you very much.
Take action on this tonight?
I think that's it for us, thank you very much.
Can I get a motion on taking action?
So moved, mayor. Second?
We've got a motion and a second, any questions? If not, everyone that's in favor of this movement, let them say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that's why we're getting ready to go to the next phase, okay? It's been approved, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. The resolution, Sounds of Summer Event. Is this E-Rang? E-Rang?
Aryan.
Aryan, okay, excuse me. Dickman and Amber Hardy, okay.
My name is Aryan Dickman, I'm the tourism director here for Chauhan County, and this is my vice chair of the TBA Board, Amber Hardy. And we're here today to talk about Sounds of Summer, which is a new downtown event. And we've also brought Joe here, he might be able to answer some questions, if there's any at the end. So Sounds of Summer will be a free public event on July 22nd of 2023, and it'll be live music from the Band of Oz, which is beach music from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., right outside of the Herringbone, well, in between the Herringbone and the Roanoke River Lighthouse. So in your packet, Cory told me that you'll see a map, is that right? Is it in there? Okay. So what we are proposing and asking today is to be able to have a designated beer garden attached to the Herringbone, so the Herringbone would be able to provide beer and wine to those listening to the music. Some things we've thought through to make this successful is we would have, we're going to have an ID check. So before you can enter the beer garden, anyone who's drinking alcohol that day has to have a wristband that says, has Visit Edington's logo on it, as well as help load anything.
The perimeter is going to be blocked off, so the grassy area already has part boundaries up there already, and then with help from our local grants and public boards, we'll have more boundaries around there too. So anyone that comes into the beer garden has to have their ID checked, and they have to have a wristband. So we'll have a lot of volunteers doing that, and then working with the Herringbone staff inside of the beer garden. So they will not sell alcohol to anyone without the wristband, and you cannot leave the perimeter with alcohol at all.
So we will have Cory call it a blockade of some sort, also, like some type of fencing around the perimeter that you see in red in the diagram. Other things happening that day are some free children's activities through the Arts Council, so we're getting other local nonprofits involved. We'll have three food trucks, one being homemade hand-dipped ice cream, and two food trucks, Old Colony Smokehouse and Kia's Way. And a cool part about this is, so half of the band speakers will be towards the park, so that way people can bring up a lawn chair. And then, the other half of the speakers will actually be towards the water, so we're encouraging boaters to be able to be out in the water and enjoying the hot July day from their boat, and be able to access the live music from the Band of Oz.
So you're trying to make this a family affair?
Yes. So similar to maybe something Boogie on Broad, that's kind of a comparable event, but this is going to be of...
At a different location.
A different location.
It is very similar to Boogie on Broad in the aspect that Boogie on Broad is a family-friendly free event also, with a beach music group that is just entertaining to all ages and singles and families and everybody. So we're just kind of taking that, that Dede took a stance off of Boogie on Broad, and we're applying part of that down here to the waterfront, and utilizing our waterfront too, and being able to encourage boaters to take advantage of the water. And we're going to give you some music to listen to on a, hopefully, pretty Saturday afternoon.
Will the dancing be within the perimeter?
Uh-huh, can or can't. Yeah. So we'll utilize the open park area near around where you see in the diagram where the band is set up, so plenty of dance room out there for people that do not want to go into the beer garden.
Gotcha.
And food trucks will start at 2:00 p.m., and that's when we kind of foresee a lot of people bringing their lawn chairs and starting to set up and get ready for a fun night of dancing and socializing, both inside and outside of the beer garden.
Will there be a police presence in the area?
Yes.
Will they be, they will not be parking on East Water Street, West Water Street?
They will not be parking within that parking lot. So you'll be able to pass, but you'll be able to...
They won't be parking out on the street, correct?
We haven't talked about that, actually.
There's no parking signs?
So then, yes, so then we'll make sure that, please know that, yes, then yes. But we will be blocked off part of the parking lot here, just to avoid children, sorry, I always get this oriented when I'm in this building, everything here. So children won't be out and about, so the food trucks will actually be in that parking lot.
So yeah, the three streets that will be blocked off are actually Dock Street, Franklin Street, and Commerce Street, which are the three parking lots. And within your packet, you'll see some cones up top of the image, that shows you kind of where it's blocked. So people will be able to go down West Water Street and let people out, or something like that, but then they have to keep moving, and they'll be able to...
Yeah, and then our advertising, we're encouraging people of the other free public parking areas where they can park and walk.
Yes, we went ahead and made public parking diagrams and have them ready to be pushed out as part of our advertising.
That was going to be my question, that was my only concern, is that that's a major parking lot, and, you know, it's kind of limited to where you can park, so that was my only concern.
So our reason for that was, if we, if we put the food trucks on the other side of the park, it made it so we wanted to limit anybody walking, any type of forward walking from food, because we didn't think that they'd be seen if they were over here from the event, so that was one thing. So we needed to put them in that parking lot, and we actually tried to figure out if there was a way we could shut down just Commerce Street, but leave open Dock Street and Franklin Street, which are the first two streets within the parking lot. But if anyone tries to go in to look for a parking spot, it would have to come out, and we didn't have, we didn't know how much of a police force we had to make it one-way with this. We went out there and counted, and with as few as parking spots as there are, it made more sense to direct people to South Broad Street, Queen Anne Park, behind Peoples.
Here, Barker House.
Here, Barker House, and then last, it would be, that just turned parking lot.
And we worked with the Herringbone to talk about what they did for their event, and what they thought would be helpful, you know, for grand opening that, and what would be helpful here too. So we put a lot of thought into this, and we didn't want to lose parking spaces either, but there's truly no way to avoid it.
What are the hours again, the hours, four to...
So the music is four to seven, but the food trucks will be ready to serve at 2:00 p.m. So anyone who wants, we just, we think people will want to get early and get a good spot.
Do you have a cutoff time?
Music starts at seven, I mean, starts at seven, but the food trucks will stay as long as they're making money. So if there's still people out and about walking downtown and they haven't sold out their food, they'll still keep selling.
We do the kickoff at Christmas event, and it's the same for that.
So it's not going to be past 10 or 11 o'clock at night?
No, not even close.
Because of the people living in that area?
How many people are you expecting? Have you got an idea if this will be similar, I guess, to the grand opening of the Herringbone in some way? You've got a band, and area is blocked off, you've got more area blocked off.
So for Boogie on Broad, the last numbers they gave me was they always expect about 1,000 people, but that is when it's not as hot, and we also, there's no boat participation. Here, we think we're going to get a good amount of boats that will be able to enjoy from the water, both residents and locals we've heard from, that are both locals and visitors we're going to hear, that we've heard from that are going to bring their boats and be able to tie up out in the water and enjoy, bring their picnic lunches and all the things. So it's hard to say, just because we haven't had an event of this, of this size, except for the grand opening in that area in quite a while, but the closest thing we can go up to is Boogie on Broad. And this is the same band that was from Boogie on Broad, and it was about between 1,000 and I think 12, one, what did she say, it was like 12 or 13? Yeah.
And that was a great band, it was a great band.
Yes, and that's the band that's from...
And they have their own following too, so...
Yes, and we're on their, online, we're on their calendar, so people that may know, they're up at Raleigh, we can see.
Will you bring porta-potties in for this event?
We've talked about it, knowing, we just have to get a better number of how many people we think were coming, or that's going to be there, but yeah, we'll, we will have restaurants.
If this is successful, you're looking at maybe an annual event?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
This would take the place of what we do not do anymore, which is Music and Water Festival, so this would be like an upsized version of that.
Yes, this is kind of, we're rebranding Music and Water Festival to Sounds of Summer to play off of music on the sound.
Somewhat similar to Shrimp on the Bay, but a different location, okay?
Flash, Joe, does this have any negative effects on the Herringbone, or is this all positive for it?
I think it's mostly positive. I mean, we're just, our main goal is to make sure we stay within the ABC guidelines, and we're taking some, you know, we're taking ownership of that, and so that's our main, main exposure is on the ABC managing that. But for us, from a business standpoint, this is very much a positive thing for us.
We appreciate partnering with them, which is something different than Boogie on Broad. With you on Broad, we've relied solely on volunteers and spending out a whole lot of money. Partnering with the Herringbone, they're doing the alcohol for us, so it's taking something off of us. We're getting a business, and they're doing the alcohol part, so it's a really good partnership we make.
So your board is pretty active in getting this set up, correct? Yeah.
Would it be from the restaurant, or from the trolley itself, the seller of the alcohol?
The, we will, our bar will be open in the building as, throughout the day. The trolley will be open, serving alcohol, and then we will likely have some other stands that are just selling cans and bottles directly out, perhaps off the deck, and maybe out in that beer garden area, we haven't got all the logistics yet. But yes, we'll be serving from all those locations.
Any more questions?
Thank you for thinking up this idea, I think it's great.
Should be a lovely event.
Yes, we're excited.
Give us something to do in Edington.
So I think you need a motion, so move.
Second.
I'll second. I'll second.
You second? All right, you got that, Tim?
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Can we have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
It passed. Thank you all, and thank, and you too, sir, for coming up with this event, to bringing it to Edington.
Well, we hope to see you all there, so July 22nd, be there, Sounds of Summer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we've got a public hearing rezoning application, case number RZ 2301, a rezoning application from the Richard A. Horn, requesting to rezone property located at 125 Davenport Lane, from the R20 residential to IW Industrial, pin number 781600503116. Presentation of the staff.
Yes, Casman Bond. So this is a rezoning application for Richard Horn for the property located 125 Davenport Lane. If anybody has any questions, it's at the very end of Davenport Lane on the left, historically is operated as a storage unit, building where they store stuff, I guess, in a building. So currently, it's R20 residential. Per Edington zoning codes, a few years back, a storage unit, from my understanding, had to be torn down. Of course, that in order to have it rebuilt, it has to be rezoned for the use of the property. I've talked to some people, going back decades, it has operated as a storage unit business. So R20 does not allow for the rebuilding of that storage unit. So it's currently, the existing land use is low-density residential, or predominantly land use is low-density. Surrounding that property just to the south would be Carrera's kind of warehouse, that is also zoned R20, which should possibly, in the near future, be changed. And to the east and west of the property is open farmland, with a non-conforming Class C mobile home park on the entrance of Davenport Lane. The analysis for this is, the future land use for it has it as low-density residential, but for the property to be used as it currently is, and the intended use of it, it would have to be rezoned industrial for the expansion, or not really expansion, but to be built upon. Beware, the rezoning of the subject property will permit all uses permissible in the IW Industrial as listed in the town's Unified Development Ordinance, Article 10, Section 1, 46, Table Permitted Uses. Granted, the rezoning request, the property owners will continue to have to comply with all the regulations intended with the Town of Edington's Unified Development Ordinance, including setbacks, building permits, et cetera. So you can see in your handouts, I've laid out where the area is, and also the future land map use of where it currently is located. Staff has recommended that the application from Richard Horn for a zoning map amendment is complete and is compatible with the 2018 land use plan, and that a rezoning would not result in any inconsistency with the existing and future land use, given the fact that it is currently operating as a self-storage facility. The Town of Edington's planning board reviewed the application at their March 6, 2023 meeting, and unanimously recommended approval. As you see, Section 20.5 of the UDO is a town council statement with plan consistency, gives the outline of what the town council responsibility is in this rezoning, potential rezoning. So basically, four elements have to be met and voted upon individually. It will not endanger the public health or safety, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and will be in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by the town council. Stable of reasonableness and plan consistency statement required by the section can be approved in a single statement. So next would be...
The applicant?
The applicant. Mr. Horn, if you wanted a few words?
What I'm looking to do is rebuild a building that was there, that was really decrepit when I bought the property, so I tore it down to try and make the property look nicer, and eventually rebuild it. So it would, it would still be at the same exact location, the concrete pad is still there, I'd just be going over the top of the concrete pad. As far as units, I'm not sure, it'd either be 10 to 14 more units with that building, and I think there was 22 in it before, but they were little. The roof was falling down on the building, and it was just, it looked terrible. It's the first thing you see when you got off the exit, so...
And that's the sole intent of this, is just so you can go and tear down and rebuild strictly storage units, is that correct?
I did tear it down, I got permits and tore it all down to come out, yeah. So that's all it's for.
Mr. Horn, have you had any concerns from the people that live on that road about what you're going to, plan to do?
No, no. The man aside of me is Carrera Painting, and he didn't say anything. Matter of fact, he even told somebody he'd like to buy the place. But, you know, it's, that whole area's a little rundown anyways, and everything you do just improves it, you know, with that trailer park, at least they cleaned that up, thank goodness, so, but that's what I... So, but, but that's what I have to fight with, you know, my property trying to make it look nice and, you know, we got the trailer park looking better, so. I think it's, you know, it's going to make the property look a lot better. We did do a fair amount of fixing up anyways. We worked on the house and resided the house, got it looking appropriate, like a, a real place to live. You know, just all in general, we take care of the grass really well and it's, it's a pretty place.
Phil, there's a real need for extra storage units in our community, okay?
Whatever. If we zone it industrial, can you have a residential house?
It's technically considered a caretaking dwelling.
Okay.
According to the, uh, because they oversee the property, um, make sure, you know, there's no, uh, theft or any other, uh, shenanigans going on. Caretaking property is allowed in an industrial warehouse.
Okay.
Any concerns from the board of adjustments?
Uh, this went through the planning board.
The plannings are?
There was no, to my knowledge, there was no, it went through, uh, it's probably one of the shorts needed.
It went pretty quick.
Any more question of Mr. Horn? You through? Okay. Yeah, the next.
I have a question for the board. That's a beautiful street. Davenport's a beautiful street and so much could be done there. Do we have any plan for addressing, uh, what is, uh, is, uh, really open space where one could be imaginative and, uh, and really put some things of, uh,
Who's the current owner of the, um?
Exciting businesses or homes in there?
Who's the current owner of that, uh, trailer park now?
Um, I've, I've looked it up before. I want to say it's, it's not, it's a non-resident of, uh, of the county of Edington. I want to say they're out of Virginia possibly, maybe Florida.
Who's that?
Uh, the owner of the trailer, or the manufacturer in Florida.
I heard he's from Florida.
Florida.
I actually wanted to buy it when it was for sale, but he wanted way too much money for it. I thought I could clean it up.
How many, how many, how many mobile homes are out there?
Great. There are five now in a lawn, but I did clean up four or five of them that were really bad. And then I think there's two more on the main street that belong to that lawn. That's, that's a 10 acre lot there.
Okay, uh, we're now going, thank you, Mr. Horn. We can turn this over to public hearing. If anyone have a comment, three minutes, please. You got, you got a time.
Um, Larry McLaughlin. I live at 118 Butternut Lane, which is not far from, uh, Davenport Lane. And, um, uh, looking at the elements that you have to pass, it's probably, uh, compatible. Some of my concerns are, um, that it's re, zone residential, all right? It's kind of a unique situation. But I look to the future, what, what happens then to the other property that's zone residential? Somebody comes in, buys that and they say, oh, I want to get a, I want to put something up here. And change, change.
Change the zone?
Change the zoning for whatever. The proximity of this lane to the exit, uh, the bypass, um, you know, it could, looking in the future, uh, what could it be? Could be any kind of, uh, commercial stuff going on out there. You know, the stuff, the crack the barrel and gas stations and all, every exit in the United States, you know? I really don't want to see it looked that way personally. And so my, a couple of questions I have for Mr. Horn. And, um, what is, is it going to be lit up? Explorers have thought lighting at night?
Uh, there will probably be some dusted doors. I mean, if you look at it now, I don't even have lights on it now since I tore the building down. I had gotten electric disconnected. So right now there's just a light on the house.
Okay, so it's going to be minimal light?
Yes, very minimal. And as far as the, um, rezoning it to industrial, you can't put a restaurant on industrial zone, I don't think anybody would.
Well, that's just if it's, somebody would want to do that, then, uh, if we all want growth and jobs and blah, 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 and, uh, voila with changes and zoning. Let me ask you this. Is it, are they going to be blue and orange?
You want blue? I just get into one, goody blue, you don't like it.
Like, you got orange doors?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not my color scheme.
How about you pick your colors up?
Happy life, bro. For sure. So anyway, that, that's a concern I have looking forward, um, with that end of the, uh, of North Broad Street. And, um, uh, there is agriculture, zone RA, right? So it doesn't take anything to get a zoning change. But what's the vision of the town council for that area? And as, as you all know, it's the ETJ, so it's not within the city limits, but you all have authority over as far as planning. I'm a county resident, we don't have much say about what goes on. And, um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any more comments? Any questions, town councilman?
Mayor Protem, um, I will move that it will not endanger the public health or safety.
I'll second that, Mayor Protem.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mayor Protem, I will, uh, make a motion that it will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property.
All in favor?
I second it.
Are you second?
Yeah.
Give that Roger Chan.
I'll do the next one. All in favor, just, aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, I'll say it will, uh, be in harmony with the area in which it is located.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Somebody read the last one for me.
I'll make a motion, uh, will, it will be in conformity to land use plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by the town council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's been adopted. Let's go. Okay, we move now into committee meetings, administrative committee. That's town council meeting procedure review.
This is, uh, um, over the past year, there have been multiple questions and or items needed clarification for general public and council members regarding the town's opening meeting procedures. Most of these concerns were a result of temporary meeting procedures that were implemented during the COVID pandemic. At, excuse me, at that time, special provisions were made due to special, uh, special distancing requirements. And these provisions allowed for a more unformal approach for certain meeting rules, including, uh, public comment, uh, emails, et cetera. These COVID meeting provisions have created much confusion for everyone involved, even though they had expired. The last official review of the town's meeting procedures for conduct was April 11th, 2015. And the review, uh, would, um, appropriate considering the confusion. So basically, uh, asking for the councilmen to review the meeting requirements because of, um, the COVID-19, uh,
Restrictions.
Restrictions in the way in which it was even done with that.
My only concern is that I don't have anything to compare it to. Um, looking over it, it seems okay, but I don't know what the changes are. I see, most of the time we will highlight, you know, the changes, but they weren't highlighted. I'd actually like to table it until, uh, we get the full council back, but then also, so we can kind of compare the two, uh, what's existing and then the, the future. I guess this one right here, they were looking to adopt.
You just read my mind, Councilman Coleman, because I was going to ask that we table this until our meeting in April, when we got the full council and we got, uh, Turning Hyde here, and he can, he might have more depth that he wants to go into more detail.
There's a lot of information in there. I think we really need more time to, to study it. So I, I go.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Everybody in favor?
Yes. Aye.
Okay.
So, um, could you guys, uh, note that if we can get their original and then, uh, if you can highlight the changes that we're making so we can see it?
Okay.
And this one was done back in 2015?
So you say 15, but COVID happened 19, so there was some revision that was done.
We just tabled that now.
Now I just want to make sure that we get the right one, that's all.
We'll get the right one.
I think what he has given you as well was adopted in the middle of 15. There's no changes that have been made in this document.
Got, so pretty much reverting back to their original?
Is there anything in here that you guys see that needs to be?
Let me discuss.
Okay.
No, we're, we're just.
Yeah, we'll still table it though.
We'll table it.
All right.
Okay. Finance committee. Budget amendment, Homeland Security proceeds. This budget amendment will allow the town of Edington to accept the proceeds totaling $12,364.78 from the Narcotics Division for the settlement of a case from July 21st that the Edington Police Department assisted with. These funds will be used to purchase two license plate readers.
I'm going to move, they, uh, move this on to the full council, consideration. I think it's a great use of those funds.
It is.
And, um, I'm glad to see that we're getting those funds and can, can use it in a way as, as planned.
Everyone agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, that's table for the next meeting then. Water and sewer.
Okay, uh, Public Works.
That's you, ain't it?
Yeah. Mayor Protem, um, I've got four items of business under the, uh, Public Works Committee. All four of my Public Works Committee items pertain to public work fee increases, which will become effective April the 1st. And with us tonight, we do have, um, our Public Works Director, David Myers, uh, to answer any questions after I, uh, give my report. Uh, we'll start off with, uh, the water and sewer, sewage tap opening fees. Due to increased cost and maintenance materials to provide this maintenance service, uh, the Public Works Director, David Myers, has requested an increase in water and sewer tap opening service fees. And what I'm going to do is, first of all, go over the water tap opening fees, the current fee and what the revised fee will be. And then I'll go over the current sewer, uh, tap opening fee and let you know what the revised fee is. And after I finish, you have any questions for David, you can, you can ask him then. Okay, first, uh, the current water tap opening fee, uh, for a three-quarter inch opening is a thousand dollars right now. And that will change effective April the 1st to $1,700. Uh, for a one-inch, uh, water tap opening fee, currently the fee is $1,200. And that will be revised to $2,000 effective April 1st. And for a two-inch, um, w- water tap opening fee, currently the fee is $1,500 and that will change to $3,500. Second item is, um, the current, um, sewer tap opening fee. For a four-inch tap opening, current fee is a thousand dollars and that will be revised to $1,500. For a six-inch sewer tap opening fee, current fee is $1,200 and that will change to $1,700. And for an eight-inch, uh, sewer tap opening fee, uh, current fee is $2,000 and that will change to $2,500. What I want to say right now, I just want, want to recommend this request for tap opening fee increases to full council. But if anybody has any questions about, uh, these fee increases dealing with water and sewer, David is here right now.
So for a point of clarity for the two-inch, it's, it's 3,000, not 3,500, is that right? Okay.
3,000, excuse me, 3,000, correct.
I have something I want to say first.
Go ahead.
I don't think that this can be affected April the 1st.
That was going to be my next thing too.
The vote on it until April 14th.
That's right.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that because that's pretty much what we were told, okay.
Yeah, that was going to be my next thing too, I saw that. Could you, could you give us a, a breakdown, like, why the, the drastic increase, like going from a thousand to 1,700 is pretty substantial?
The economy is, the price of brass, the material used, has gone through the roof. I actually have like a breakdown of what we spend, um, to, just for us, Public Works, to do a three-quarter tap. It costs us $2,200. So, you know, we're still losing money, um, at charging the $1,700 fee rate. It's the price of brass, uh, the price to get the material here, the fuel charges and everything. That's why everything has gone up so much. We're just trying to push the cost back onto the customer and not the tap.
And that's no profit to us, it's just strictly cost?
Yeah, but we're still losing.
You said you do have a breakdown, if you could, okay.
Okay, hold that. We's, we're tabled it until full council. We're going to ask David to come back at full council and go through this then, when everybody's here. There's no need for us to go through it now and then for him to repeat the same thing at full council.
Yeah. So we're not voting today.
Yeah, we're not voting.
But he still can, he still can give you the same information at full council, when you're going to take a vote, so it'll be fresh in your mind, okay?
All right.
Okay. Item number two, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Garbage rate addition, small waste commercial restaurant. Public Works Director recommends that a small waste commercial restaurant rate of $56 a month be established to cover sanitation services for those particular smaller restaurants in town utilizing multiple trash can containers. Since there's limited space available to the smaller restaurants, utilization of town or private dumpsters is prohibited in their particular locations. As an ongoing practice, the small restaurant locations were charged the same as other commercial locations for sanitation services, even though their demand was greater. This time I'd like to recommend this garbage rate addition be sent to full council. Any questions for David on this one?
What's the existing rate?
There is none right this second.
Oh.
Like, so the Herringbones and Waterman, uh, are just two for an example. They don't have room for a dumpster, so they have eight to 10 cans, which gets dumped two to three times a week. You know, a regular resident gets charged $6.50 for one pickup. Whether these certain places get two or three services a week, you know, eight to 10 cans. So it would be just a new, new policy.
Okay.
Just for certain, uh, restaurants.
I'm fine with that.
Mayor Protem, our third item is, uh, garbage rate removal for the one, two, and six yard dumpsters. At the current time, the town does not have any customers utilizing the small one, two, and six yard dumpsters. The Public Works Director recommends the town remove dumpster services for these sized dumpsters and that the council, and, and that the current rate be removed for billing use. I recommend the current rates for billing use be sent to full council. The fourth item we have is the boat pump out fee increase. The Public Works Director recommends the boat pump out fee be increased from $5 to $25 for all boaters. Town administrative staff, um, are of the opinion this increased rate reflects a more accurate rate for the, this particular service. And I recommend this rate increase be sent to full council at our next meeting.
Okay.
That's it, Mayor, for us.
Okay. And David, you will be back at full council the 14th of April, right? Okay, all right.
Corey will be back to back you up too.
Okay. You too, Virginia?
Lord Roman.
Okay. That's going to end the meeting then, our committee meeting.
I'm going to return.
I move it.
I second it.
Thank you.